Good evening and welcome to the Village Board of Trustees meeting of February twenty first. If we can all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to our board meeting for this evening. Our first order of business is a presentation on a traffic study from Kim Lee Horn, Andrea Connell. Thank you, Andrea, for coming.
Thank you. I'm going to stand up here in just one.
Yeah, sure, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. I was asked to come here to give a presentation on some of the intersections that are concerned in the village. I met with Chief Plissman and all the council staff and they gave me a tour of four intersections. And we had good discussion on some of the concerns and I saw firsthand some of the issues. So what's shown on the screen here, I'll put the slide show on. So these are the intersections that we visited and we were concerned. The first one is Ryhills Road and Reynolds Road, Mine Road, then Orange Turnpike that's an angled intersection with Pine Tree Road, Stage Road, then Carpenter Place and Mapes Place and Spring Street and Mapes Place. So we'll run through each of these individually and we'll discuss some of the issues there. So Ryhills Road and Reynolds Road and Mine Road. So Reynolds Road, Mine Road, they are controlled by a stop sign at this intersection. Ryhills Road is a free flow. And some of the issues are the sightlines. If you're trying to exit out of Reynolds or Mine Road, your visibility to the left and right is impacted. And it's impacted by trees, vegetation, utility poles. And there's also a vertical curve that's just to the north of the intersection on Ryhills. So there are accidents. There's been a recent uptick in crashes at this location. According to the chief, the speeds are not generally not an issue. There is a speed back sign that's online, although they don't work that side, just not very much. And one of the other potential issues in the future is there's a proposed residential development Ryhills Preserve, which is located just to the south of this intersection. And that's going to have about four hundred, five hundred residential units. And that's will be able to traffic to this intersection and others in the village. So we'll talk about the sightlines. I'll just hop over to the next slide for a moment. So what's shown on the screen, these are some of the photos I took that day at the intersection. So this shows some of the sightline issues. The photo on the upper left just shows the intersection itself. So we're looking just to the south on Ryhills. The photo to the right shows if you're coming out of Mine Road, looking to the right, you can see that little red circle there, that's here, that's vegetation. And I know that this is a winter view, so in the spring, summer, fall, it's going to be much more growth there, much more impacted. The bottom left shows if you're coming out of Reynolds Road, you're looking to the left onto Ryhills Road. There's a tree, there's some other vegetation as well that would impact the sightlines. And then the middle on the bottom shows coming out of Mine Road, looking to the left. There's also some sightline issues there. You can kind of see where the crest of the road is. On the right shows if you're coming southbound on Ryhills approaching the intersection. You can see you're just approaching the crest of the hill and you really can't see what would be coming out of either Mine or Reynolds. It's kind of a blind spot there as you're on Ryhills approaching the intersection. We head out to the previous slide. Okay, so potential solutions. So, you know, safety is always a concern at any intersection. So we would like to increase the sightline. So in order to do that, it's a fairly simple thing. You would clear out the vegetation there and maintain it in a good state so that its, your sightlines aren't impacted. Typically, to determine how much of a sight distance you need if you're exiting from the side street, you would look at the operating streets on Ryhills Road. And then you would look at the standard, like say if it's, you know, thirty-five mile an hour speed, it might say that you would need three hundred feet of sight distance in one direction. And if you're at thirty-three mile an hour coming from the other way, it might be two hundred eighty feet. So that's how you kind of determine what would be the minimum required sight distance. Another option, in addition to increasing the sightlines, would be to install and always stop at the intersection. So that would require putting stop signs on the Ryhills Road approaches. So every approach would stop at the intersection. And typically, you would look at, you know, the walk, the accidents that have occurred there, and the volume of traffic that goes through the intersection. You could do an intersection analysis just to see how it would operate if you were to stop all four approaches. But it would definitely calm traffic down, it would slow traffic down, it would make it easier, obviously, to exit out of any approach.
Sure.
Any questions on this intersection?
Sure. Did the PD give you any analysis, any traffic study?
He didn't give any traffic studies for that. I know he has, he has information, documented information, they run the speeds in that area. Because there is a speed feedback sign, they do collect speed data on the northbound approach just beyond, on the other side of Reynolds.
Right.
They collect speed data there, so.
Was there any data given to you for the Ryhills Preserve project at all?
You know what, I looked up online on the town's website and they did a traffic, trip generation, like a two-page letter that just has a table and it's showing how much traffic it would generate. Other information I found on the town's website is they were asked to do a traffic study. And I think that intersection was one of them.
Okay.
I think they also mentioned a long orange turnpike as well. But I haven't seen anything, nothing recent has been posted in at least the last four or five months. And I think Creighton Manor might have done a traffic study. They did the letter, the trip generation letter.
Oh, okay.
I could only reach out to Penn.
Yeah.
Creighton Manor, we just see if anything's going on. Because one thing, if they are doing something, they might have to do some improvements there.
Right.
They might identify some improvements.
Okay.
I just got one question. You had made a comment about making that a four-way stop sign. Ryhills coming downward is about a probably eight to ten percent grade. Doesn't that throw any caution?
So you would have to put in intersection ahead signs? And especially when you're just putting in, you do maybe temporary flashing sign, like, you know, stop ahead type of thing to warn owners that there is now a new stop sign coming up there.
I mean, just a grade coming downhill into a stop sign, I think in itself is going to be a safety issue.
Well, we can, you know, we can look at speeds there and see what the speeds would be.
I mean, I think it's a safety issue without the light. I travel it every day, it's right near my house. And I have my hand near the horn whenever I drive it because I've heard the accidents. And I know there's been at least twenty since that intersection changed. And you have school buses coming and it's, it's, that one and two are the ones I travel every day. And they're both, to me, something has to be done because it's definitely a safety issue.
Okay, thank you.
Go on to the next intersection. Okay, so the next intersection is the angled intersection of Orange Turnpike with Pine Tree Road, Stage Road. So because of the layout, you know, it impacts visibility and it also creates confusion because there's a lot going on there as to who has the right of way type of thing if you're coming from the side streets. You know, if you're coming out of Pine Tree Road and you're looking to the left, you're looking basically in your rear window almost to see. The same thing was coming out of Stage Road. So the other thing that Police Chief had noted that there's speeding is an issue along Orange Turnpike. It's posted at thirty miles an hour and apparently it's less than excess of that. And then queuing, there's, there's long queues. I observed at four P M. when I was out there at Pine Tree Road, there'd be a long queue, which probably is a standard situation.
Sure.
During school.
Yeah, and then Stage Road, I would assume maybe in the morning is.
Same issue.
So those are some of the concerns and, you know, of course, safety is always a concern. So a potential solution would be a red signage to indicate, you know, there's an intersection ahead. If you put a speed feedback sign in on Orange Turnpike, you know, just kind of like what you have. I think other areas in the village I just warned about the speed there. Those have been found to be somewhat effective in the morning speeds. Where to make the intersection, you know, decrease the delays on the side streets is you could always put a full traffic signal in. It's a flashing signal right now, but you could put a full signal in, but you would have to meet certain volume marks that are required by the New York State to go take, to install the signal. And we could also then conduct an intersection analysis to identify, you know, how bad is it, what measures could be taken. Another option would be potentially to reconfigure the intersection even to the standard four-way, which that would probably require a right of way, because I don't think you have that at the intersection. Or you can make offset intersection. And I'll show you what that looks like. Basically, what you would do is turn, say Pine Tree Road, have it come into a ninety degree angle and do a safety check at Stage Road.
That, that was there.
Was that taken away?
It was taken away.
It took that away because of?
Who knows? Somebody had a great idea.
Basically, two Ts.
Yeah, basically two Ts. And, you know, I don't know if you would need signalization in, but you'd have to do, obviously, a traffic study to see what, you know, how many people are turning left, right, and how would that, would it make it better than today? Would it make it worse? It would make it probably safer to, for sightline, to be able to see better. Any questions on this one?
You said something about signalization. Do you, do you see that as a likely correction? I mean, a.
So it all depends on volumes.
Yeah.
I haven't seen volumes. I'm not sure if there were any studies done in the last few years that have done traffic counts there. I mean, you could always do traffic counts. Typically, you would do it for all the houses. You would count both side street approaches and Orange Turnpike, you could use them to track the traffic. And then compare that to the volume thresholds.
Sure.
Thresholds you have to meet to warn traffic.
Sure.
I think what, what makes this difficult is because there's so many buses coming from the schools and staff and parents. And when you're, when you're coming down Pine Tree to either make the left, I mean, I could go either way to go home, left or stage. It, it's, you're constantly bobbing your head back and forth. It's definitely changed over the years and I like the way it used to be. I, I don't know if I, that one's a little tricky, but it, definitely if you did a traffic study, you'd have to do it Monday to Friday. I mean, I know the weekends are bad, but Monday to Friday is really bad.
Right after school's out. It backs all the way up there.
And in the morning.
You would typically do it on a typical school day during the season, not if you want to do it weekend because DOT looks at weekday counts.
Right.
You know, so we look at weekday volumes. And if there's some study that's been done, you could just correct those.
Pine Tree is also used as a bypass of seventeen M. So it pulls heavy traffic for the full length of it.
Same is true about Orange Turnpike. People take Orange Turnpike to avoid, not truck traffic, to avoid a toll and harem and come up to a tuxedo and, you know, up the Orange Turnpike. Anything else? Yeah.
Is the resident allowed to speak or no? I think all residents want to speak.
Yeah, the, the next intersection, Carpenter Place and Mapes Place, which is right around the corner from here. So the Mapes Place, you know, this is an unsignaled intersection, stop sign on Mapes Place. And it's, it's a wide lane there, it's about twenty feet wide, it's striped, it's one lane. It's typically used as two lanes or part of the left and one, one side of the wide lane and then another vehicle on the right. And the resident had asked that it be striped to show a left and right lane. So one of the recent things at DOT, they discourage having two lanes on an unsignaled approach. Because what happens is, say you're trying to make a right turn and there's someone on the left, to the left of you, trying to make a left, you can't see. So it creates potentially an increase in crashes because of that, because it's a, it's a safety issue. So your sightline would be blocked from the vehicle that's in the adjacent lane. So potential solutions, do nothing. If it's used as left and right occasionally, you know, you won't be stopping that. The other option would be to restripe it to provide just one lane, it would be like shoulder, make up the difference. You know, and that, of course, would, would add to the delays on Mapes Place if the district was, has two lanes on occasion.
What about making that a three-way stop sign? Three-way stop intersection.
Potentially, you could do that, but I'm not sure if the, is, if the delays are the issue.
No, moves pretty, but moves well.
Moves pretty well?
Yeah, it moves well.
Yeah, or, or the other option is to do, to restripe it for the, for the two lanes. But again, DOT is not real good for that type of treatment or that type of thing.
It's like that on the other side, on the Spring Street side.
It has, yeah, two lanes.
Two lanes. Okay. Okay.
Any questions? Okay, so the next one is the other end of Mapes Place, which is through Spring Street. So the, the issue here is that queuing on the westbound approach of Spring, Spring Street, because it's vehicles that want to make a left turn, they're now blocking all the traffic that wants to hit through. So it's, it's just a one-lane approach. And with the Spring Hill Apartments, when that was built, they put the sidewalk in that kind of reduced a little the shoulder. Because the shoulder would occasionally be used to bypass those left turns. So what that does is it just backs up traffic a little bit more. And the traffic signal, the way it operates, it's Spring Street goes, that stops, and then Mapes goes. It's two phases. So potential solutions would be modify the traffic signal for the, the new signal phase in. So where you would have the left turn arrow for the westbound approach. And then you've got a left turn arrow, you could also have a right turn arrow coming out of the base. So it's like three phases. So that would clear up the queue.
But there's only one lane on the Spring side going northbound, right?
On the Spring?
Right.
There, there's one lane, right.
But you said a left-hand.
You have a left turn arrow.
Right.
A left turn arrow.
But with one lane, you'd have only whoever is there.
Right.
Otherwise, it would queue back up.
So that, that would, that would help, you know, it depends on whether it be percentage of left turns versus threes, but it would be some benefit there. And then the other thing is modify the existing traffic timings to give maybe more time to the Spring Street approaches. I know, I had reviewed the Spring Hill Apartments developments for the planning board. And I know one of the recommendations that the applicant made was to modify the signal timings. I don't know what became of that. That's part of the approval, condition of approval. Have to look into that.
There was also one summer that you could make a right on.
Onto Spring.
Onto Spring from Mapes on the red. And it was really nice. And then it, then it stopped. I don't know what the reasoning was, but.
Part of Yak, I think that was part of the Yak program.
It might have been.
It was getting backed up coming out of the Smith Close Park.
And then they just never did it again, but that right on red was, was pretty nice. Because that.
So where to put, you know, was that the left turn arrow on the westbound? You could put a right turn arrow on the east.
You've got a sight distance problem here too, along those resitia bushes and stuff on.
Angeles, yeah.
DeAngeles' whole property. And I believe most of that is art, is village property.
It is, at least on Mapes.
Yep.
Yeah, on Mapes. But that, that really needs to get, should be scrubbed out and cleaned up to at least give you a little bit of better sight distance when you're coming up Mapes if you want to make the left-hand turn. That would certainly help.
Okay.
And that was pretty much, the next slide is just questions.
We're asking along the way.
So did you think there was room out there on, on Mapes and Spring to provide two lanes? If you're coming from Spring, heading up toward North Main, and Spring Hill is to your right. Is there enough for a left-hand turning lane and then through traffic?
I'd have to take a closer look at that. It might be tight, it might be, you want to have at least ten foot maintenance. You have to take a look at that after, you know, because now with Spring Hill, you know.
I think you've got utility poles there too. By the Smith Close Maintenance, there's, there's telephone pole right there too. That would have to be pushed back.
Yeah.
I think probably two poles.
I mean, that would be, if you could accomplish that goal, that would be a big value. Okay, Andrea, I think next steps are for us, get these traffic studies done. I'm going to speak with the, Justice Berenjil will speak with the chief on getting them out there. Okay, so. Let's circulate an email between Andrea, the chief, myself.
Okay.
Asking for what specifically we could do in traffic studies.
Okay, and you want them for all for, well.
This one's important for sure. I mean, Ryhills, I mean, yeah, I guess, yeah, you might as well just get them done.
Yes, I'll, I could, you know, uphold it and see what's, what's implied and if there's something that we need, that you know.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so good. Anything else on the board for Andrea?
No.
Andrea, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a great night. Okay, next order of business is a due process hearing for the following two properties. Two ninety-eight Spring Street with an SBL of two oh nine dash one dash nine point two three. And the second property is four hundred Route seventeen M, SBL two seventeen dash three dash thirteen point one. Is there anyone here at the public or in the public that represents or owns those two parcels that are here today for this eve, this evening's hearing? Okay, I'm going to read the following for both. Due process hearing is held tonight, Tuesday, February twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M. In the boardroom of the Village of Monroe, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York. The hearing is being held to review the violation issued by the Village of Monroe Building Department on the following property within the Village of Monroe. Noted two ninety-eight Spring Street, two oh nine dash one dash nine point two three, and two seventeen dash three dash thirteen point one. Of the Village Code, Section one five five A, there six E general requirements. All land must be kept free of dead or end or dying, dying trees and accumulation of brush, shrubs, weeds, grass, stumps, roots, excessive and or noxious growth, garbage, refuge, or debris which would either tend to start a fire and or noxious growth, excuse me, or increase the intensity of a fire already started, or cause poisoning or irritation to people or animals, or cause to lend, or tend to cause, or enhance, an unhealthy or dangerous or obnoxious condition on said property or any adjacent or neighboring property. The specific violation is garbage, trash, rubbish, debris scattered throughout the property, specifically food waste, paper garbage, broken glass, discarded tires, and plastic containers. Is anyone from the public here tonight on these two properties? Okay. Yep. So no one's here from the, these two properties, owners or representatives. So I'd like a motion to close the due process hearing for both these properties.
Berengile will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Discussion. Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Okay, I need a motion to accept the department reports submitted by the clerk and department heads.
Carl will make that motion.
Second, please.
O'Connor will second.
Questions? Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Yep. Next order of business, approval of meeting minutes as submitted by the clerk for the February seventh meeting. I get a motion?
Ferraro will make the motion.
Berengile will second.
Discussion. Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, budgetary transfers and modifications as submitted by the treasurer. Need a motion to accept them as submitted.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
I just got one quick question.
Yep.
The gifts and donations, what, what was that, seventy-three hundred dollars? We know what that is?
I don't. Oh, it was the equipment. It was all the sound that came to down town, all the audio, all the Christmas, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
It comes in under that line, but it was for that purpose.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we had a first and a second. Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, DPW Automotive Mechanic Steven Mihak resolved the Board of Trustees, accept DPW Automotive Mechanic Steven Mihak, which has completed his probation in accordance with Orange County Civil Service rules. The Board of Trustees approve his permanent appointment effective September twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. The necessary MSD four twenty-six will be submitted to the Orange County Department of Human Resources. I need a motion to make this.
Berengile will make the motion.
Ferraro, a second.
Discussion. Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business, Justice Court Attendant Jay Diaz, trustee.
Resolved, Justice Court Attendant Jose Diaz has completed his probation. And in accordance with Orange County Civil Service rules, the Board of Trustees approves his permanent appointment effective September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. The necessary MSD four twenty-six will be submitted to Orange County Department of Human Resources. And I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Berengile will second.
Discussion. Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business is the appointment of Zoning Board of Appeals alternate member Jay Lenari, trustee Ferrar.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of Mayor Neil Dwyer and appoints James Lenari, twenty-two Cunningham Drive, Monroe, New York, to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill a vacant alternate position that currently exists on the ZBA. Mr. Lenari is appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a five-year term, fulfilling a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. And I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Second, please.
Carl will second that.
Discussion. Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order is old business adoption of local law number two of twenty twenty-three, modification of chapter one ninety-five of the Village Code, water to protect the Monbeisha Reservoir from contamination. Whereas the Village Board of the Village of Monroe, New York duly noticed the public hearing held on September twenty, twenty twenty-two, and October four, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the Village Board solicited public comment during said public hearing on September twenty and October four, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the proposed local law finds and determines that access to and recreational use of Monbeisha Reservoir, the villagers drinking water introduces a level of risk of contamination to the villagers' water supply that needlessly jeopardize the health and safety of the village residents and all others who depend on the Monbeisha Reservoir for safe drinking water.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add another whereas on the record that this is a type-two action under SEAKER. Proceed.
Okay. Be further resolved that this is a type-two under SEAKER, this action. Now therefore be it resolved that the above whereas paragraphs are incorporated herein by reference. Number two, the local law modification of one ninety- the local law modification of one ninety-five of the Village Code, water to protect Monbeishu Reservoir from contamination has attached, as attached, adopted as local law number two of twenty twenty-three of the Village of Monroe on February twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. The Village Board hereby directs the Village Clerk to take all steps necessary to process and file said local law. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Okay.
On filing with the Secretary of State, you just need a motion?
I need a motion.
Carl will make the motion.
Second, please.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion. Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Thank you. Next order of business. Event application for the MS Walk, resolved, the Board of Trustees approved the request of the National MS Society of seven thirty-three, Third Avenue, Third Floor, New York, one zero zero one seven, to utilize the commuter parking lot on Mill Pond Parkway and the walking path in Crane Park to host their annual walk on September, June eleven, excuse me, Sunday, June eleven, twenty twenty-three, from eight AM to two PM. Approval is given for setup on Saturday, June nine, twenty twenty-three, from two PM to seven PM. Sign-off for the event has been made by the Building Department, Highway Department, and Police Department. There is no additional cost for police protection. The Monroe Police Department will assign an officer to monitor the vehicular and pedestrian traffic during the hours of the event. Proof of liability insurance has been provided. I need a motion to accept this event.
Berengile will make the motion.
Second.
Ferraro, second.
Discussion. Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business on the same matter, the resolve, the Board of Trustees waived the event application fee due to the MS Society providing that they prove they are a five oh one C three.
Carl will make, Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion. Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Next order of business, an agreement of Kimley Horn Engineering and Landscape Architecture of New York, resolved, the Board of Trustees authorized Mayor Dwyer to sign the agreement with Kimley Horn Engineering and Landscape Architecture of New York, PC one North Lexington Avenue Suite five oh five, White Plains, New York one oh six oh one, for the purpose of public engagement and conceptual master plan services for Crane Park to be allocated from Budget Line A, seven one one zero point four five zero zero parks contractual. Counsel, I wondered if we could table this?
You can certainly table that.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business. Inter municipal agreement with the County of Orange, resolved, the Board of Trustees authorized Mayor Dwyer, Planning Board Chairman Jeff Boucher, and Zoning Board Appeal Member Paul Bound to sign an inter municipal agreement with the County of Orange, two fifty-five Main Street, Goshen, New York one oh nine two four, regarding requirements for municipal referral of certain planning and zoning actions to Orange County Department of Planning for Review. I need a motion.
Berengile will make the motion.
Ferraro, second.
Discussion.
There are no costs on that, correct?
No cost. Okay, call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Next order of business, introduction of local law number three of twenty twenty-three, temporary modification to chapter eighty of the Village of Monroe Municipal Code and scheduling of public hearing. Be it resolved that the introductory local law titled Temporary Modification to Chapter eighty of the Village of Monroe Municipal Code is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York, and be it further resolved, copies of every said proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees, and be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the Village Hall, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, seven PM, March seven, twenty twenty-three, and be it further resolved, the Village Clerk shall publish or course to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe, no later than five days prior there, too. I need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
This is the updated one.
Mr. Mayor, it's three, it's three days. You have a local law allowing for three days public notice hearing. So you need to also determine when you're going to set that public hearing.
Okay, so we're going to strike this.
Just, just add that.
Take out the five days?
Yeah, I, there, there's a revised resolution.
Yeah, that's what that is.
Three days instead of five. Okay.
Okay. So, no later than, no later than three days prior there, too. Let me read that back, please. Be it res- further resolved, the Village Clerk shall publish or course to be published a public notice in the official newspaper of the Village of Monroe, no later than three days prior there, too. Should I read that?
That's wrong.
Yeah.
Clearly noted on the record.
Yep.
And it'll be in the minutes.
Okay. Need a motion?
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question.
Berengile, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried.
You would need to set the public hearing.
I did, I did above.
Have you set a date for the public hearing?
Seven PM, March seven.
March seven, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, next order of business, a moratorium waiver request, fourteen thirty-one Orange Turnpike, section two thirty-one, block one, lot three point four two. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, this is Ford Dennis Lynch with the mosque center. If you want me to face a little way so the audience can hear me.
Turn, turn the mic so you can just talk.
I don't want to put my back to the audience, but I want to make sure. Sorry about that. Never would make it on Broadway, for sure, you know. Those of you who don't know me, I've spent thirty-five-plus years on civil rights, property rights, religious rights. My work representing people goes from two Irish Catholic plumbers from the Bronx, who I got them eight million dollars about twenty-five years ago for a civil rights violation. I'm happy to represent the parish visitors here in Monroe, and I'm also happy and honored to represent the mosque here in this village. The mosque is not something new, not something strange. They've been here for about ten years, maybe a little over ten years, I think. Thirteen? Even longer. And I think people that know what they do and how they operate will know that there's been no complaints, no problems that anywhere else would have. So, I mean, they've been good neighbors to this village. They have one request and one request only, which is before the moratorium took place. And that was request to let them pray, let them conduct their services, let them do what their religious practices require. And up until the mosque grew, that was able to be done by how they were accommodated in the current building. But that building has limitations. New York State Building Code, not your zoning code, has prohibitions about how many square feet you must be. And people cannot attend the mosque services. New people can't become part of the mosque unless there's an expansion that would be allowed. I have the mosque president here tonight, I have the engineer here tonight. We're very happy to give you a little presentation. I told the engineer that even though he brought his board and his easel, you know, that only, only bring it up, present it if you want to see it. But the plans for this mosque have actually been on file with this village and are still on file with this village for a considerable time. At least when your moratorium was enacted, there was an active application here before the village. It was looked at by your village engineer. And everything seemed to be going in the order that it should be going into. Now, why the moratorium took place and how it, how long it will continue, that's a matter we don't know. And in fact, only I think litigation will ever tell us why the moratorium took place. I have my suspicions. I could be wrong. I'm frequently wrong, my wife tells me. But I will say this, that it's a concern. It's a concern that while our application was pending, this moratorium was adopted. You're a very excellent attorney, who I know for some time, and I, believe it or not, disagree on your moratorium. And it was shocking, two attorneys have a different position. But I think anybody would look at this objectively, would say that your moratorium does not accommodate, does not include the need for religious freedoms. You know, the First Amendment to our Constitution was for freedom of religion. There was a reason for that. Because it was the most important thing that the founding fathers and mothers of our country saw. And your moratorium law, and again, it will be tested in court if we have to take that route, I'm not looking for that route, but I get hired to do these things. Your moratorium law does not have any single feature that allows for an accommodation of religious practices. What it deals with is what they call takings. We have to show by economic proof, you can't get a reasonable return. And that was my Orange Town McGee case, where I won eight million dollars. That was a property rights case, not a religious freedom case. So, I gave you a long letter, I mean, the place is crowded tonight, you may have other, I'm sure you have other things you have to go into. I'm not here to take your time. Every board member received, or should have received, or at least the board is on notice of my February seventh letter. I'm asking tonight for one of four things. Number one, I believe in my letter points it out where we do qualify for the waiver. And again, all the plans have been filed. We're here to address anything you want us to address with questions, mosque president is here and our engineer is here. That if you don't believe the waiver applies, I think that we have vested rights to continue, and that was my Orange Town McGee case, so last time I'll say that, okay? And it was eight million dollars I won, for a town in Rockland County that violated civil rights. So if the waiver doesn't apply, and if vested rights don't apply, I think there's a concept called municipal estoppel, and these are terms that you're very distinguished, a lawyer knows about, that lets us continue even if it doesn't, the other two don't. But at the very least, I think you have to recognize that your moratorium law does not apply to religious issues. It applies only to takings. We're not here to threaten litigation. I don't do that. I promise litigation, I don't threaten it. But I think that, you know, if you look at what's before you, and you look at the mosque as being good neighbors as they are, and have been, and will continue to be, I think you'll see it, I, I think a responsibility to see it under the First Amendment, I would call it a liability, to let them move forward. I understand that your moratorium may end relatively soon, maybe it may, maybe it won't. And in addition, I would be very interested in asking the permission of the board to contact your planner, I'll do it through your attorney, and find out what the new moratorium law, what the new, the comprehensive zoning law applies for. If it, if there's no restrictions on the mosque that didn't take place before, no problem at all. If there are restrictions, then we've got a problem, in my viewpoint, alright? So again, you have a busy night, you have a busy crowd, a large crowd here, I'm not here to take your time necessarily. Those people know me, know that I don't waste time. But we're here to answer any questions you have. The engineer can give you a brief verbal description of what this proposed addition is. He can go through the plans here, whatever you'd like. The mosque president is here also to tell you that the moratorium and the inability to build has had a detrimental impact on the mosque. Both with regard to those who want to attend and can't because it's crowded, or those who want to attend but know it's crowded and don't attend. And the First Amendment, again, your excellent attorney will tell you this, your First Amendment is so unusual in that you don't even have, you have to suffer a harm to invoke the rights of the First Amendment. You don't have to be injured. If there's something called a chilling impact, and your counsel will tell you that at any time you want to learn about it, even a chilling impact is actionable under the First Amendment. And I think that, you know, there's no question that the ability of the mosque to continue as it's continuing is certainly being shown. The last thing I will say, and again, lawyers can debate this. Arlopa was formed as a proposed law and adopted, if you look at legislative history, because a lot of people would come to board meetings and they would object to religious activities, they would reject to religious groups, and their objections weren't based upon planning, zoning, and other normal principles. You know, I grew up as an Irish Catholic, alright? To me, to go into a mosque would be the furthest thing in the world for me, alright? For me to go into a synagogue would be the furthest thing in the world for me. But I've taken the time to go into those particular places, and I find that they're really just like everybody else. So I'd ask you to consider these things, I'd ask you to, if you have questions, our engineer is here to give you a presentation if you want it. Our mosque president's here to tell you what he'd, what the same things I've just told you, if you want to hear it directly from the mosque president. But I'd ask you to make some type of decision tonight. I thank you for your time, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
What was the third? You talked about the waiver and the vested right. What was that third, the term you?
They call municipal estoppel, E S T O P P E L. That's a very rare principle, I'll tell you that right now. Again, your attorney, I know her in the sense that she's an outstanding attorney, she'll tell you, there's very few cases where this applies. There's a case called Parkview versus City of New York, where some builder built an extra ten stories. Thinking, well, you know, I can, I built it, and the court made him take it down because municipal estoppel was not the appropriate thing. And again, whatever path you want to take forward to let us continue praying, we welcome it. So that was the third one.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, so for the president.
You want to say a few words, Mr. President?
So I, I believe we've met.
Yeah, a few times.
Yeah, I think so, and I think we have, as a community, I think we have a great relationship. Would you agree?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. And I think you're also part of our nine eleven ceremony.
Yes.
Have been since I'm mayor.
Yes.
Yeah. And your application with the planning board, when was that first submitted for review?
I think August two thousand and twenty.
I'm sorry.
May I answer that question?
When was it first submitted?
August twenty-nine, last year.
Before the moratorium? I'm sorry?
I believe it was after the moratorium, just.
Well, I think we submitted it after we met with the village engineer, and then while I was waiting in the village aisles, the moratorium was announced. So there's no question that the village was aware of this particular, not the village, but employees of the village or consultants were aware of this application before it was physically delivered.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a handle, you know, because as you pointed out, as your attorney pointed out, and as I know, you've been here for a number of years and have enjoyed the use of the space for your prayer groups and your facilities for whatever you see fit for your faith, right?
Yes.
And the application, which was filed on August of twenty-two. Yep, twenty-ninth. Okay, and where are, where are you at? I mean, like, has it even been, have you come to a planning board meeting yet?
No, we can't go anywhere. I mean, once that, we were told about.
It was during the moratorium, is what I'm saying, right?
We were told about the village, we can't do anything more.
Well, no, and that's appropriate because we're in a moratorium.
We can debate that.
Yeah, yeah. But really where I'm going here is I'm trying to see, you know, because I know you were looking at sewage issues, I know
Yes.
when we had the discussion, I tried to, and I successfully, I think, argued not to go the way you wanted to, because that would be very expensive for you. So you're going a different way for sewer, so that's a good thing, right?
Yes, that was it.
Sorry, we followed the advice of John O'Rourke.
John O'Rourke and Mike Sandor.
Who's an outstanding, maybe you too, who's an outstanding engineer. I mean, you know, you have first-class people in your village representing you. I want to compliment you for that.
Actually, the mayor was trying to say that there was a back-and-forth email regarding the sewer, so, you know, I know that one, you know this one, too.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm glad it's worked out, because expense-wise, it would have been prohibitive for you.
Yes.
You know that about it.
Well, it's more expensive to be delayed, but that's another story.
Okay. So, okay, so we have that, we have the letter from you, and we have a date of submittal, right? Eight twenty-nine, so I think we have.
I think you still have our check, by the way.
And we still have your check?
Two checks, yes.
We cash it?
No, I don't know.
Not yet.
But if we do, we'll make that Exhibit A.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, I have, yeah, I don't think so. I think we have everything I, for me, I need, you know, you are, you know, as you say, again, as your attorney has said, I don't need him to tell me this, but I know you're a great member of the community.
Thank you.
We're solid there. Anything else from the board?
I would just note that as with all applications for waivers, this board has submitted the request to the planning board and asked for a recommendation and a report. So I think the, I mean, the planning board has the application. I would suggest that the board ask the planning board to report back on any comments they might have as to.
We're happy to do that, and I think you mean our application, meaning what's physically filed, plus my February, February seventh letter, right?
That's fine, yeah.
Listen, we're not here to make life difficult for the village. We understand people who are here tonight, and they have concerns. I will leave you my email publicly, dennislyncheesq@gmail.com. Anybody or resident wants to ask me questions, they're happy to, I'm happy to respond to them by email, so I mean, there's no, there's no secrets here.
No. I feel like I'm in an infomercial.
Well, Mayor, you'd be the star of that one, not me.
No, no, you would be Dennis, no doubt about it. So, okay, terrific. Well, I appreciate the diligence and the work, and we're going to speak to the planning board, we're going to request formally.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board.
Thank you.
Counsel.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Mayor, can I use the bathroom?
Yeah, please. Just leave the quarter.
Can I, can I use this quarter if it's okay?
Yeah, sure. He may not like it, Dennis, I don't know.
One at a time, though.
He's a little freaky that way. Okay. Next order of business is the, we had the two due process hearings, and now we have the resolution for both of them. One concerning 298 Spring Street, which is 209-1-9.23, and the other one is 217-3-13.1. So if I could, sorry, read the following. As per the village code.
I'm sorry, do you want to just make sure no one is in the audience? Maybe they came late.
Okay, maybe, yeah. So is anyone here to represent or that owns 298 Spring Street? And/or 400 Route 17M? Okay.
Okay, so let the, let the record reflect.
That no one has come forward on both cases. Thank you.
Oh, how you doing? Good to see you. I didn't know what it was. Is everything good? Sounds good.
Yeah, well. Okay. So I'm going to read the following resolution. As per Village Code, Article 1, Section 155A, Dash 6E, Failure to Control Trash and Rubbish. All land must be kept free of dead, dying trees and accumulations of brush shrubs, weeds, grass, stumps, roots, and excessive end or obnoxious growth, garbage, refuse, or debris which would rather tend to start a fire or increase the intensity of a fire already started, or cause poisoning or irritation to people or animals, and/or cause or tend to cause or enhance an unhealthy or dangerous or obnoxious condition on said property or on any adjacent and/or neighboring property. The specific violation is garbage, trash, rubbish, debris scattered throughout the property, specifically food waste, paper garbage, broken glass, discarded tires, and plastic containers. There has been a failure to remedy. Whereas alongstanding violations of the Village Property Code, Chapter 155A, Dash 6E of the Village Monroe have existed at 298 Spring Street designated as tax map SBL 209-1-9.23, and whereas the property owner has been given proper and lawful notice of said violation and has been directed to correct the violation, and whereas the property owner was given due notice of a due process hearing to be held by the Board of Trustees on February 21, 2023 at 7:00 PM, and whereas the owner did not appear, and whereas the owner has not taken steps to correct the violation and the violation still exists, and whereas the Board of Trustees authorized pursuant to Section 155-8A, excuse me, A8 of the property maintenance law, to authorize that the village undertake to remedy such violation at the property owner's expense, cost and expense to be further resolved, that the village clerk mail a certified copy of this resolution to the property owner via certified mail. Be it further resolved in any violation that remains uncorrected on the property as of today, February 2021, excuse me, 21 of 2023, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village, its contractors, or agents to enter upon the property to correct the aforementioned violation, and that all costs incurred by the village, including administrative, legal, and corrective costs, be charged to the property owner, and such charge shall be added to the tax bill of the property owner if not paid within 30 days of notification to the last known address to the property owner shown on the village tax records. I need a motion to, excuse me, one second. Before I do that, I just gave you 209-1-9.23. I'm going to include in that resolution that we include 217-3-13.1, which is the second property, with the same code violations and the same unresolved issues. So I need a motion to.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, how, how quick are we going to get to these? Because the one has, has been an eyesore for quite some time.
Well, I'll turn this over to DPW and look at their calendar, and we'll see what, before we have some answers by the end of the week.
All right, and the ones that we did last, our last meeting, are they, are they being worked on?
So.
112 Spring, is it? That's, that's a mess over here.
Okay. Okay. There were four, right?
Yeah, the two other ones, though, are, they were.
Right, okay. All right, so we'll follow up on 112 Spring. Just give us a heads up on that, okay?
And this is 298 Spring.
This is 298 Spring.
There has been other issues with, yes.
Yep. Okay. Okay, so we had a first and second. Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Farah, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Farah, aye, so carried. Okay. Mayor's report, I don't have anything. Counsel, do you have anything? No, okay. Anyone from the public who'd like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, counsel, and Madam Clerk. Couple of points I want to make before I speak. I think it's great what you're doing with the intersection, especially on mine and Ry Hill. I know that our highway superintendent has spoken to, I believe, you as well as Aldo, and offered our services with the bucket truck and whatever else is needed. The other part, I want to thank the board, and especially trustee Farah, for the enlightening music downtown. It, it, it really is uplifting, it is. I mean, you go down and it's a totally different feel. So, so thank you for that. I just wanted to make some comments concerning the local law number two regarding Monbasha Lake. We, we have concerns in the town. First is, at the public hearing, the residents around the area were, said they would be given the opportunity for some dialogue, and I don't believe that happened. I could be wrong, but I'm sure they would, they would speak to that. Second is, this was a type two that you designated this, and I believe it should have been a type one, and that the town should have been involved in that process because it contained more than 25 acres. And it was a law that pertained to a property that's in the town. So I was, I was a little disappointed in that. So with respect to the actual law, my understanding is that the state had to be notified. I did mention that last time I was at the meeting. I'm not sure if it was, and that they had to approve it. The last point I'd like to make is that we met, Brian Nugent and myself, met with the Department of State on this, and we were, that was yesterday. We met two representatives from the Department of State. Department of Health wasn't available. And we were told that the village does not have code enforcement rights with respect to this property. You can put someone out on the lake, and whether they're a code enforcement officer or not, they can try to choose, they can try to chase somebody off the property. But that said, it's essentially trespassing. And without enforcement rights, they don't have to listen to them. They don't have to leave the property. Now, listen, the town is not here to argue with you on this. We're, we understand the protection aspect of this reservoir. And I just think that there were some pitfalls in the process. And, and I'm just asking for a response, doesn't have to be tonight, but I'm asking for a response to my points to prove possibly that I was wrong and incorrect in what I stated here tonight. Especially the, the type one action. I think, I think that's important because we're an, an interested agency that was not properly notified, if it was a type one, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. My name is Martin George Bischoff. I've been a resident at the Nettie Fred Cooperative Corporation on the shores of Lake Monbasha since I was in utero, literally. I grew up along the lake. My grandparents owned property there, my, my parents. I'm now a bungalow owner on the lake. My kids, three kids, my sister's kids, and the many families that are part of our community have grown up together. So there's a very, very strong sense of community. And over the years, we have been faithful stewards of Lake Monbasha. We have as strong a desire as anyone to keep the lake as pristine as it has ever been. The risk of contamination, which is the basis for your decision tonight, I'm not sure to what extent access to the lake and the risk of contamination has been studied. In my view, it is, the, the decision is somewhat arbitrary. And it's not really clear what the rationale is when other reservoirs around the country allow for access, particularly for those homes bordering on the lake. So I'm just here today to express my disappointment, my sense of heartbreak that the law was approved in the somewhat arbitrary fashion that it was approved, and stand here with my neighbors and my family in solidarity to protest our, and express our disappointment in the, in this, this ruling. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name is Eleanor Kudisco. I'm 80 years old, and when I was about seven years old, I wound up in Lake Monbasha. My parents bought a bungalow in another colony, and it burnt down. So they bought a house on Nettie Fred Corporation. And from the time we were little, and in 1949, I guess, the lake was very low. And Fred Stevens and my brother and Aunt Nettie, we went out, we put boards down, and we went to the little island. Uncle Fred told us and Aunt Nettie that this is our property. We own this here. We own it till the end of the island. So you can't stop these people from using the water with their boats or anything because that is their property. I just want to let you know.
Thank you.
Sir. Mayor Dwyer, good to see you again. Martin Bernard Bischoff, there seem to be a number of us here. I want to say a few words also in regards to this. My parents owned a bakery here, Monroe Bake Shop, many years ago. I'm a graduate of Sacred Heart School, later on, Burke Catholic and Goshen. And the last time I was here in this room, I presented to Mayor Gleason, now you said who hired you. And for that, in that evening, I was asking for approval to do a scout project on Lake Monbasha. Now, I'm a resident of East Monbasha Road, so I was very, very in tune with the lake, what was going on there. And if you go down East Monbasha Road, past Nettie Fred, there is Sharon's Cove. There used to be an old colony there, a lot of decaying buildings and so on. And as a scout troop, we went in, helped remove some of the debris that was there, and also plant pine trees. And those pine trees are still there today. And I was thinking about, when I read this, about contamination on the lake, and the efforts that my scout troop and myself had put into doing projects like that, and some of the work that's ongoing in the lake even now. The Water Chest, I think it's called, that's, you know, not only in Monbasha Lake, but in large parts of New York. I'm a West Point graduate. In the last event I went there, you could still even see them in the Hudson River. And I just have trouble with the word contamination because all of the residents, not only at Nettie Fred, but over on the West Monbasha side, understand the beauty of this gem that we have been entrusted with. And to use a word like contamination when I've seen nothing of this over the decades that, knowing that I lived there, but now I'm in New Jersey, I'm sorry, we all have our burdens, but I still come up here quite a bit. And to see the effort that everyone here has put forth, and those in West Monbasha, and to look at those trees that I planted some, oh, only 15 years ago, more like 45 years ago, that are still there today, is indicative of the effort that we've put forward to make sure that lake remains as pristine as it was years and years ago. So thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Larry O'Neil, 8 Riley Road, next to the water plant. I'm going to address my comments directly to you, Mayor Dwyer. And I'm not going to talk about process like Tony did, and I'm going to talk about character. You stood in front of us, and you said this was going to, and you were 100% right that the law that was proposed back in September and October had lots of loopholes in it. You guys have a lot you had to button up, no doubt about it. Recreation was not the only thing, and it certainly wasn't the most important thing. But you committed to us that you would have dialogue. You committed to us that, that when the law came back, it wouldn't look like it did then, and it's identical. I really, I really am disgusted when we looked, looked you in the eye, and your lawyer had someone who was waiting, and she was getting frustrated because it was taking 20 minutes for you to go through your speech about how you wasn't going to let this happen to us, and here we are. Disgusted. All, all of you for voting for it, but you in particular for taking that stance. At minimum, if you disagreed with the stance he took then, each one of you should have spoken up. That's your job as a trustee.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Bischoff, resident of Nettie Fred Cooperative Corporation. I guess I'm trying to figure out what's going on because there's no contamination in the lake. Your studies showed that, and yet we have this local law too. And I know many of you have heard in the public comments and in emails that we're confused. We're trying to figure out what's going on. Is there something going on that we don't know about? I'm not like, I guess I'm like, sort of just like straightforward, trusting person, and tend to think everything's on the up and up, but just, we keep getting, and I keep getting so confused. It's like, what's going on behind the scenes that we don't know about? And like, why isn't the village responding to our attempts to work as a community to keep the lake clean and to be stewards of the lake? So like, there's no contamination, yet the local law's about contamination. We want to work together as a community, a community around the lake, with the village, with the town. And again, we feel confused by why the village isn't working with us. So then we got even more confused when we learned about the Townsend property. The town, the town of Monroe passed a resolution, Resolution Number 29122, to acquire the Townsend property on Lake Monbasha, and that was back in June 2022, through a donation from the Townsend estate. And we wonder how the lake or the village would benefit from the village acquiring the property for $10,000 as opposed to the town receiving the property as a donation. Like, either way, it's preserved. And then we wonder, I wonder, if the village sees how this looks like a conflict of interest, that Greg Townsend, who works at Sterling and Marshall Insurance Company, which is the insurance company for the village of Monroe, and he's also the heir to the Townsend property. So the insurance agent for the village of Monroe is selling a property that's connected to him to the same village that he insures. And I don't know how this is exactly connected to contamination in the lake, and I don't know how the local law too is connected to contamination in the lake. But you leave me being more suspicious than I've ever been in my life, and I also am really disappointed.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the public who'd like to?
I just want to express my Alex Rivera from 16 Riley Road. I'm a little disappointed. All six of you earlier tonight unanimously voted for this. And I was appalled because in the fall, we got a good, warm feeling that you were going to do something neighborly. Give us an opportunity to address your concerns, we would be gatekeepers. We would be self-patrolling the lake. There's no evidence of contamination. Other municipalities have managed to work it out. They have a lake resource, and they use it for both, both a water source and a recreational lake. And somehow, we can't figure that out? That's, that's disappointing. And then there's no instance or incidence of unsafe use of a boat or any accidents happening. And so then I'm, I'm just perplexed. No contamination, other municipalities do it, there's no accidents. I just don't understand why all six of you unanimously, unanimously came up with this, you know, agreeing to just prevent us from going on the boat. And then finally, I can't fathom how the limited resources of the Monroe Police Department are going to go 3.6 miles southwest to get a grandmother off the lake? Because she's with her kid, and it's been going on for six decades. Grandmothers, their children, their grandchildren, so they're going to go. Grandmothers, their children, their grandchildren, so they're going to go away from monitoring the DUIs and the drug addicts and the drug dealers and the traffic infractions to kick an old lady off a lake? They just, this, this is wrong on so many levels. And finally, the, the politics, you could smell it in the air. Not one of us can vote you off, because we're from the town.
Do you need to give the clerk your name?
Yes, my name is Brandon Russell. I live on 12 Lakeview Drive in, in Monroe. I had submitted some questions previously that you guys didn't answer, but the gist of it was, all of the reports that were done, the Barton and Gudice report, the recommendations from Orange County regarding water, all point to what Tuxedo is doing, where the residents on the lake are the stewards of, of the lake, and, and that's the recommendation. This isn't about recreation, to me, you mentioned the word contamination, this is about allowing us, the residents of the lake, to be the stewards, and it's what the county is recommending, and it's what the engineering firm you, you paid is also recommending. So, the recreation seems to throw it off a little bit, and I, I think that's something that really needs to be considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
James Usman, I live on 7 Scenic View, and I emailed you guys earlier today as well with some points, including nice video clips from you looking us in the eye, as others have said, at, I gave you your actual video back, where you said, you're going to meet with the two representatives, you're going to have discussions. I just want a verbal combination. Have you had those discussions, yes or no?
If it was in that video, we have not.
Okay, so you said you were going to, then you didn't.
So, it's in that video that I said I would do that, meet with two people.
Yes.
Okay.
Did you ever have that?
No, it never happened.
Okay, you forget? Just curious.
Probably, yeah.
Anyway, I'm not going to go into it. The other thing I like is kind of what Mr. Don had said, is you received a letter from the town's attorneys that spelled out certain legal issues. Can you address those legal issues in writing or somewhere to say, why did you disagree with it? It's really up to you, you can disagree, you're an attorney as well, but did you disagree or did you actually talk to the state? We should know whether you talked to the state or not, and if you disagreed, put it in public record that you disagree with that opinion. So, I'd want it in the public record that you disagree with the legal opinion of the town's attorney. And I can't believe you all voted at the same time, too.
Anyone else in the public?
I'm Allison Priest, 24 Lakeview Drive. I am also very disappointed on your law two, and I ask that you add an amendment to that law for the people that have worked with you through the years for the Water Chestnut problem and keeping the lake safe. This is totally unfair to us, and I'm asking you to make an amendment for the people that live around the lake, so we can still have some recreational and rights to help people on the lake and have access from our own properties.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Mr. O'Shea, I apologize, I know you're here for the. Yes. I'll tell you what, why don't you hang out a second? Just stay with me a second. Okay, so we had public comment, I'm just going to add, Mr. O'Shea, if I could, have you come up to the mic here and just kind of, let's talk about your issue, because I did, we didn't get it into the agenda on time. Would you mind doing that?
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
My, hello, I'm James O'Shea. reside at 229 North Main Street. I'm also a local business owner with an emergency plumbing and heating business right here in Monroe. SOS HVAC and plumbing. I was working so late today, I didn't have time to change, so please excuse my close. My driveway is shared by three tenants of that building, and when everybody has their cars in the driveway, it is almost impossible for me to turn around in that driveway, and I am forced to back out. I brought some pictures with me so that you can see what the driveway looks like. This is the driveway with every car except for my box truck and my landlord's second car in it, and these are pictures of the hedges alongside of the driveway, which is not.
See, I've just got a glare here, if you don't mind.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
I have tried installing a rearview camera on my box truck. It does not give me a clear view of the road down either direction, and so I was looking for at least a temporary exception to the commercial traffic, or commercial parking law that has recently been passed, because my fiancee has currently lost her ability to drive due to Lyme disease and post sepsis syndrome, and I'm not listed on her insurance for her vehicle until lease is up on this vehicle and she gets a new one, so I can't drive my vehicle from our apartment to my shop. And so, I would like the ability to park in front of my house on North Main Street, right across from the elementary school, at least until she is cleared to drive again. But.
This is a box truck?
I have a 14-foot utility box. I also have a Ford Transit Connect and a Ford Ranger that are also commercial vehicles, but those are driven home by my business partner and my lead installer for environmental and financial reasons. They get much better gas mileage than my truck. My truck is a half mile from my shop or less, so for me to drive that home makes the most sense, but it's a 14-foot utility box, E350, and its gross weight, as it's registered, is, I believe, 6,400 pounds, so it's a fairly light box truck. It's only weighed down when it's got the materials from an install in it.
Mr. O'Shea, you said the, so when you, you pull in versus backing in, I guess is the issue, right?
Backing in is extremely dangerous and almost impossible.
I'm asking you, so you pull in, right?
Yeah, pull in nose first.
And you try to back out, and that's where it's unsafe.
Yeah, and because I tend to leave before my neighbors are awake and return after they've already returned from work, I typically don't have the ability to safely back into the driveway, and therefore, when I pull in, backing out is extremely hazardous.
Can I see the picture? And I believe there's no, there's no parking in front of his house, is there?
Directly in front of the house, there's not, but if, directly to the right, as you were looking from the street at our driveway.
Up the hill.
Down the hill, towards where it becomes 208.
If you had a box truck and you were parking on the street, what would that do for sight distance for anybody else coming out of that driveway? Would you be blocked by the, by your vehicle?
As long as I backed up to the adjacent, the driveway of the adjacent home, which number I don't know, there would be no ability with, or no obstruction of their line of sight.
He's almost behind me, he is behind me. Could I offer you a space at my shop? Would you take that?
You're directly behind us?
Yeah.
Yeah, without a doubt.
Done, there you go.
Excellent, thank you.
Go charge. I just, hello? Done, you got it. Okay. Okay, with nothing further, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Berenger will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Berenger, I.
Ferraro I.
Carl I.
O'Connor I.
YRI, so carried. Thank you all for attending, I appreciate your attendance.